We in Saginaw City Council order, please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item number two is the invocation for that city council member Patrick Farr.
Will you pray with me? Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here today and conduct the city's business. Father, we lift all of those up who are suffering and still dealing with COVID-19 and the related effects of that terrible disease. Father, thank you so much for this weather that we're having this week and continue to bless our city. Lift up everybody that works in this city and everybody who has a genuine heart and care and concern for this city and its residents. Be with us tonight as we make decisions on behalf of those residents that we may have clear thought and focus. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Patrick. Item number three is all the participation. If there is an item that you would wish to discuss, you see the city secretary and you may discuss any item that is listed on the agenda. I'd like to welcome our folks watching online. I hope there are people watching online. Please give us some feedback. Let us know how the audio and visual video quality are. We want to expand our online audience. So please let me know how you think. Moving forward, item number four is the consent agenda. A action regarding minutes of March 16th, B is action regarding minutes of March 30th, C is action regarding joint election agreement and contract with Tarrant County, D is action regarding building improvement grant with Star Doby, Inc. We are going to pull E. F is action regarding developer agreement with Fuel City. D is action regarding approval of purchase of vehicle or replace fire department vehicle involved in accident. H is action regarding approval of temporary access agreements, residence replacement of 609 fossil wood drive, et cetera. I is consideration action regarding resolution 2021-12 supporting the Tarrant County 2021 transportation bond program. J is action regarding award of bid demolition clearing structures at 108 South Belmont. I will entertain a motion for all except E.
I'm sorry, mayor. I do need to recuse myself from item J.
Okay.
I think it is too close to property that I own. So if we could pull item J.
Pull J as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
So the motion would be for all except for E and J. Do I have a second? Mr. Tucker, a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. With the record in effect, we do have a quorum. All are present. Let's do item E now. Item E, mowing contract, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Yes, sir. Thank you, man, mayor. This is a contract that we award usually on a two-year cycle. This has been a one-year cycle. We elected not to renew the option in one year and then rebid it and the same contractor became the low bid. And based on the difference between the low bid and the second bidder, we decided that we would go ahead and recommend award of contract. So I understand council member Big Horse has some questions. If anyone has any questions, in addition, I'd like to try to answer those or respond.
I did ask for some history information on there and we do look like we're coming in at a lower bid this year than last year, which is good news. But even then, when we put our budget together, we still didn't even come close to what last year's bid was. So we're, it looks like we're about $33,500 short when we put our budget together for this year.
I would agree with that, but I will say that the number, if you multiply the number of mowing cycles times the unit prices, you're going to get a number and that would be what you would expect the contract amount to be. But the growing season fluctuates, so that may or may not be used, even the amount that's available in the budget. I've already advised Kim that we will ask for an increase in that budget in next budget cycle to cover that, but we're likely not to hit that total contract amount based on the growing season. And if we do, then there would be an adjustment to the budget made.
Okay, so you don't even think we'll hit the budget?
Typically not. I mean, if we have an extraordinarily wet summer, then yes, it'll put pressure on that budget, but it's manageable. I think that there are ways to manage that.
Okay. And then I was also looking at, what's it, well, first of all, what's the difference between A cycle and B cycle?
A cycle and the B cycle depends on the level of maintenance that you would provide. So, you know, you think of your yard, if I lived on an acre, which I do, you know, I manicure the front yard and the backyard, but then I have the lower half, the back 40, if you will, that doesn't get the same level of maintenance. So the B cycle is the lesser area, lesser level of maintenance, not attention to flowerbeds. The mowing height is not as high as it would be in the B cycle. So that's primarily the difference.
Okay. And then the last question I have is the cost for the B cycle is about 60% of what it was last year. I mean, I'm not complaining about that. That's wonderful for us.
Yeah, it's a contractor's bid. So I mean, if he bids it in a way that he thinks is advantageous to his contract, so I don't have an explanation.
We didn't change anything on our requirements or expectations?
Not really, no. The expectations are the same, specs are the same. I'm looking at the superintendent over there, he's nodding his head, so yeah, that nothing has changed from prior bids. Let me say that there is pressure, I was talking to Mayor Pro Tim prior to the meeting, there is upward pressure on the mowing contract as we bring new subdivisions in. So, you know, we had a big jump, if you saw the data over the last six years of contracts, you saw a jump one year primarily due to the addition of Longhorn and the median associated with that, parkways. You know, when Belt Mill Parkway comes in with Belt Mill, I mean, that's going to be a tremendous amount of pressure in addition to the pocket parts that'll be part of that. So you will see these prices go up. And I haven't seen an industry during this pandemic that hasn't been affected by upward pressure of prices. Talked to a homeowner today, or a home builder today that said, you know, right now with lumber prices adding $30,000 to the price of a regular residential home, you know, a 2,000 square foot home, we're getting speculation that concrete prices are going to double or triple between now and October. And, you know, just so it's, everything's high right now.
Yes, it is.
We're lucky to get the bids that we got.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for item E? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item E on the consent agenda as presented.
Cindy, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed, all right. Item J. You going to stay in the room or are you going to just abstain, Mr. Farr?
I'll stay here, I just want to.
Okay. Item J, action regarding award of bid demolition clearing of structure located at 108 South Belmont. Any questions, comments, concerns on that, anything we need to discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a second? Cindy, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining? There you go, all right. Moving forward, item number five. This is exciting. COVID vaccination update. For that, Joe Lassiter, emergency manager coordinator. Welcome, Joe.
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens of Saginaw. Just a quick update on what's going on at the rec center yesterday. No vaccines were given. We just did a setup. They did dry runs, pretty all just successful seeing how it was going. And then today was, you know, the mini test, as I like to say. Today was a major success for UNT Health Science Center, Tarrant County Public Health and the city of Saginaw. Today, UNT Health Science Center vaccinated 324 first Pfizer doses. The number of second doses is to be determined this evening. There were nine extra doses left over. The team was able to utilize a waitlist to ensure those doses were administered today and not wasted. While I observed the medical staff work, I timed multiple individuals walk in the door, have their shot in the arm on an average of a three-minute time span. Then after that, they sat down, did their 15 minutes, and then they were out the door. Transportation, I've reached out to the Catholic charities of Fort Worth who are willing to help with transportation needs to the vaccination clinic. A phone messaging system with information on transportation, the vaccine clinic registration information and how to contact me personally will be provided to the public tomorrow morning. Reminder to the public, you must register on tarrantcounty.com/covidshot. UNT is expected to administer 600 doses tomorrow. And with that, I'll take questions.
Any questions for Joe? Cindy?
I do. How are you getting this information out to the public? Because I know several seniors that haven't had their shots yet, but they don't have access to the internet.
That's what the, that's what the call centers do. Okay, so the community outreach, ma'am, is what, something we're going to be attacking. They're coming in tomorrow. We're scheduling a meeting with city leaders and church members and different things like that throughout the northwest region of Tarrant County. So if you know anybody, let, just let me know.
Okay.
Their names and all that stuff, and I'll be more than happy to reach out to them too. I do see there's, there isn't, today, I saw it for the first time, there is an issue out there with people having issues with registering. So I'll be more than happy to help walk them through that, as well as the library's been helping too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Joe? Joe, I appreciate your work on this. Thanks for running point on this. We appreciate you keeping us in the loop as well.
Yes, sir.
It's a great thing. Good luck, let's roll.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Absolutely. Item number six, at 6:11, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding resolution 2021-11, fiscal year 2021, mid-year budget revisions. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, mayor and city council. We amend the budget in the same manner in which we adopt the budget, so that's why we have the public hearing. And then it requires council approval. The mid-year budget revisions, you have the attachment for all of the specific line items. The general fund amendments fall into mainly four categories. One is the CARES Act funding. So we didn't complete all of the expenditures. As of September 30th, we finished spending the one point, or accounting for the $1.2 million in October. So that's what, that's one category of adjustments that are being made. There's also the expenses as well as the revenue for the Western Center PID. That was the first PID with Providence that didn't end up going through, but we had expenditures and they reimbursed us for those expenditures, so we're adjusting the budget for that. We have projects that were not completed that were budgeted in last fiscal year, so we're finishing them this fiscal year and we're adjusting the budget for those. And then the final category are those items that you have approved since October 1st. So they weren't included in the budget, but they have been approved by you individually during council meetings since then. So those are the main categories of adjustments in the general fund. There are also carryforward expenditures in the capital projects fund, the donations fund, the primarily it's park donations, so park board additions that have been made since October 1st. And in the general escrow fund, those are also PID-related expenditures. So that's all I'm going to, I plan on presenting unless you have any specific questions.
Questions for Kim? Questions, comment, anything? All right, any other questions for Kim? If not, this is a public hearing, so anyone who wishes to speak on this item, you have to approach the dais. You don't need to sign in, just approach and speak if you want to speak on this item. If not, at 6:13, I take us out of a public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 2021-11, the mid-year budget provisions as presented.
Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed, all right. Thank you, Kim. Item number seven, update on business building improvement grant program. For that, Keith Reinhardt, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, mayor and council. I mainly just wanted to come up here so I could use the remote control because it's kind of fun. Still a kid at heart, I guess. I wanted to give you all an update, kind of where we are with our building improvement grants. I think it was an executive session or two ago, one of the council members said something about an update. I think it was council member Big Horse asking about an update. And I thought, that's a good, now's a good time to do that. So I started going back and looking, kind of pulling up the last update that I did. And believe it or not, it's actually one year ago today. Well, it was April the 7th, 2020 was the last time I did a report, so it's one year ago at this time. See if I can make this work. There we go. There's a lot to economic development, but I'll sum it up into four items. One is the business retention, keeping what we have. Business recruitment, we're doing a lot of that. Actually, we do it every day. Property and business development, currently we have, in different stages, as many as four mixed-use developments that are going in, so, you know, the property new, business development. And the last one, which kind of tugs at my heart a little bit, is the redevelopment of the existing centers and basically taking care of what we have. And that's what this, that's what, exactly what this program does. I don't even remember which button I pushed. Not that one. There we go. What you're doing with this program is you're reinvesting in what we already have in place right now, putting money to help improve the look, the feel of our community and helping our businesses out. Fixer Upper, I watched that show, I just had to put that in there mainly for that reason. The program is for community commercial, neighborhood, commercial, office, light, heavy, industrial, and we've had planned developments. We've had everything except, I believe, maybe the planned development so far. So we're getting a good mixed use of this grant. You can see the different items that can be used for, this grant can be used for such as facade, public guard, interior renovation, parking, various other items up there. This is really small and I'm, I can't read it even with my glasses, so I'm going to skip ahead. Last year, a year ago, on April the 7th, when I presented this to you, we had so far, up until that point, 48,780 in grants that were awarded by the city. The 14441 was the building improvements made by the business owners of Saginaw. So they put a little bit of money into their own place for return on the city's investment at 288%. I mentioned up there in parentheses, actually higher in two ways, and I'll explain that in just a minute.
And Keith, let's make a good point of that because we do require businesses to put money, their own money into this.
That's right.
We're not just giving them a gift. They are putting more, most of the time, more than we give them into the project. So can we highlight that or will you speak to that?
Sure. The businesses have, can request for a grant and it's generally 50%, up to 50% of what their total cost of their project, like if they have a $10,000 project, if they're wanting to do, replace their HVAC, which that's pretty cheap, I think, for replacing HVAC. But for example, they can request up to $5,000 and the council can award up to $5,000. The council can award less, but it's, in very general terms, it's, that's been the term of about 50% for every, so yes, they do have to put down at least, generally it comes out to double of what the grant has been awarded for. Finally figured out the button now. It's a lot of fun. I'll let you all use it in a minute. The next four examples that I'm going to show you are just, they're all perfect examples of what this program is, but the next four are really the definition of what this program does. The first one is a property owned by Bud Starnes. At one time, it was Jitter Bean Coffee. Loved it, got the Americana, really strong, kept me jittery, bouncing off the walls, it was really good stuff. And they had great coffee, but for whatever reason, it didn't work or they closed, probably about five, six years ago. The building as it was, it just sat vacant. It just sat there, just like a rock, it just sat there. Talking with Mr. Starnes, he put in a 500 gallon grease trap and some other items, spent, to your point, spent $30,350. The city awarded him a grant of $5,000, which is a return on our investment of 605%. The vac, the building was vacant for five or six years, bringing in zero sales tax money, bringing in minimal property tax value because the values had gone down because it's just a vacant building. With the addition of the grant and the improvements that were made, now that building is bringing in sales tax revenues. And now the property values have gone back up because those people, the owner Bud Starnes and then the tenant has put money into that building to make it much better. The perfect example of what this program does. Julian Lambert, professional photography, those pictures are kind of a little hard to see, and I'll say, there's a better one in just a minute, but they put in, they, they're an existing business that were in further south Saginaw. They saw this one building, which has been a number of different things, and it's basically a cinder block shell, or it was, a cinder block shell with a concrete floor. The upper left photo, you can kind of see what it looked like. The upper right is the inside of it, it was just trash, just nothing in there. And the bottom two photos are kind of what it has become. I don't have photos of the inside, but it's pretty amazing if you haven't been there. Spent well over $33,000 the first time that they applied for the grant, they were awarded $5,000. Here's another, just, that's the explanation of it. You can see the top photo and the bottom photo, just the difference in that. I've been checking the Tarrant appraisal district website almost on a daily basis because when that first, when this first grant was awarded, the value of that property was only $11,000 of that cinder block barn. And I'm waiting to see what it's gone up to because they've done such amazing work on that building. DB Realty Investments, another good example, another category where there was an abandoned house, dilapidated home, unlivable, had far too many code violations. To demolish the home, it was $4,000. The council awarded $2,000. Same things I spoke earlier, it's actually in a community commercial, it's zoned community commercial, but it was a home. And it was obviously bringing in no sales tax revenues and the property values were way down. City participated in the demolition of that. Now that property can be redeveloped into a commercial property. Great example of it.
Keith?
Yes?
I know.
I always stick my ear up to the microphone. Oh, I do that. Sorry.
Does it help if I speak closer?
No, it's okay.
Does Mr. Elkin have any plans for this property?
Not yet, he does, but I haven't heard what they are yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Another great example, Palomino Southern, it's a strip center property. They, the first of what they're wanting to do was they wanted to re-stripe and fix their parking lot. I shop in there because there's a Mexican meat market and they have great food there and they have a little cafe thing in the very back and street tacos, the best, outstanding. So I shop there a lot on Fridays. And they wanted to repair, reseal, re-stripe their parking lot. It was very worn down. The upper photo, you can kind of see a little bit, a lot of patchwork here and there, it just didn't, wasn't very appealing. You can see, that was a photo on the bottom right where they, in the middle of the process. The look of the center is improved significantly, you know, to where it can help invite tenants to come in there and certainly for patrons to come in there and shop because it just looks, it looks so much better. He's planning to do more work, but certainly for the grant, he's going to, he said he'd apply for the grant again, which he can only apply for the grant once in one calendar year, but he's going to do that again. El Paso Sito, just down the street, they replaced their HVAC, driveway repair, did about 13,5 in repair work, council awarded $5,000, return on investment was 269. Sunshine Playhouse, another great example of, similar to the Palomino Southern where they redid their parking lot, looks so much better. I run past it almost probably twice a week and it looks night and day from what it did. It's a very great improvement to that, certainly that parking lot, that business. Saginaw Laundry Center on Belmont, they replaced their HVAC system with the heaters and such going on there, generated a lot of heat. They improved their HVAC system, council awarded five grand, return on investment 344. Hofer Builders is in progress right now, I just don't have an update at this time, but it's coming along. Our first return customer, Julian Lambert Professional Photography, recently they did some more work, replacing some more HVAC and insulation, over $20,000, they were awarded $5,000. This is a return recipient and that's what we want. We want, we want the first time recipients, but we definitely want them to return and to come back because it's improving, it's improving the look of our city, it's improving their business and it looks, you saw the, what it looked like before they moved in. It's night and day. I grant, I understand that y'all, y'all did approve a, award a grant tonight. I don't have it on here because I don't like to assume that anything's going to happen. You know, the next time we have a, an update, that quick car will be on there, but it wasn't approved when I drew this up and it wasn't approved before the meeting, so. To date, you've awarded $80,780 in grants, which is great. The 273 and some change for building improvements made by the business owner, I mentioned about actually higher in two ways. One, it's improving, those are the improvements they've made to their facility, but also with those improvements, it's improved the, their property values and the property values are going up, which in turn, the property tax that's coming back to the city is going up also. For a total return of our investment of $338,000 over the whole program, course of the program, which is about a year and a half that it's been in existence. That's all I got.
Any questions for Keith?
Ready for questions?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to put you on the spot quoting numbers, but do you happen, do you happen to know, we're about halfway through the budget this year? Have we spent more than half, less than half of what we've budgeted or do you know?
We're probably there. We're probably right there. I don't have the exact in front of me. Kim, Mike.
It'll be $20,000 of the $50,000 that's budgeted. Okay, I just have two possible suggestions for the budget preparation next year, and that is, since this seems to be really taking off and the more of these that are done, the more, more businesses will hear about it, we might want to think about maybe adding a little bit to the budget for that purpose. And then we have some very large industrial businesses that would possibly make a very huge investment in an improvement. So perhaps we can go by square footage or property tax assessment or something like that to maybe allow us to participate at a higher level with those types of businesses. Thank you.
Any other questions for Keith? Thanks, sir.
You bet.
Great work. Keep it up. Item eight, consideration action regarding the approval of sister cities memorandum between Saginaw and Banjul, Republic of Gambia. For that, Abdullah. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdullah Ijuju. You can call me AJ. I am a current intern at the city of Saginaw and an MPA student at the University of North Texas. First of all, I'd like to thank mayor and council for allowing me to give this presentation. And I would also like to thank the city manager for his exceptional leadership qualities and the amount of help that he provides in the area of academics, especially for those from the MPA program at UNT.
Mr. Mayor, I think Abdullah is saying that because Dolphin and I took him to lunch, so I just want to preface that, but thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome. Now, on March 16, 2021, I gave the city council a presentation about sister city relationship and I highlighted some of the important points and also discussed some of the benefits that could be generated when such a relationship is established. Now, today being an important day, the city council, with the presentation of the resolution which they will be voting on, I think it will be important for me to further discuss some of the advantages of this relationship and some of the benefits that will come out of it if it is approved. The first thing that I would like to discuss is... it will promote and support cooperation amongst residents from Banjul and residents from Saginaw here in the areas of culture, economic development, education, health, and tourism. And I would like to discuss each of these separately. In the area of culture, although Banjul is a small city, like I said the last time, has a population of about thirty-four thousand people, but it is a unique city, where we have up to twelve different tribes, and each tribe has their own way of doing things. And Saginaw being in a different country, people here will be able to have an opportunity to experience the culture that we enjoy in Gambia. Like me, from particularly from the Madinka tribe, like, we play the drum, and people like to dance to that. So I believe that is something that we can bring to Saginaw, and people can at least learn how to perform those dances. In the area of economic development, when I started working here in October, I quickly realized that the city is developing in a quite rapid way, and I like to compare it to Frisco, the city of Frisco. In every corner that you go, or that you drive around in Saginaw, there's projects happening everywhere. And I think this will be a great opportunity for a small city like Banjul to learn from the great leadership that leaders in Saginaw introduced to get to this stage. In the area of education, I attended elementary, junior, and senior school in Gambia, and I've discussed some of the difficulties that students face in my country, and those challenges are still out there, making it difficult for people to get to where they. Many students drop out of school due to resources, limited resources that are available to them. And in the area of tourism, I think this will benefit the people of Saginaw a lot, because when it's cold here during the winter, we have tourists coming from different part of the world, and they visit Gambia between October till April. Like I said the last time, Gambia, it does not snow in Gambia. We don't notice snow. We don't know snow. So all we know is hot weather. You go to the beach and enjoy yourself. So people from Saginaw here can indeed fly out to Gambia and enjoy some of those qualities, especially when they are connected in a sister city relationship. I also like to discuss areas, when it comes to performing arts, youth organizations, schools, and sports, one thing that people in Gambia experience for the first time in fifty-seven years is that our country finally made it to the African Cup of Nations after trying for fifty-seven years. So we are excited for the Scorpions. The national team is called the Scorpions, and the boys there did a great job, and we are all looking forward to watching them in the next year's African Cup of Nation celebration, performance. Now, in the area of performing arts, I spoke with the mayor in Banjul, who was so excited, and she even said that she will be sending a group of musicians who will be performing in the upcoming festival in Saginaw in October. So if this opportunity is finalized, I think that will be a great opportunity for the people of Saginaw to see people performing different type of music that they haven't seen before. And we will also be able to discuss that we have different food in Gambia. Hopefully, we will also be able to have a group of people from Gambia who will be selling those type of different foods in the festival, and have people try that. Now, how we're gonna do this is that a delegation from Banjul will be invited here in October, and then the city council here and the people of Saginaw will also have an opportunity to send a delegation out to Gambia next year if these, if these proposals are voted, approved. So on that note, I cannot wait to, I cannot wait for the approval of this resolution, and I cannot wait for everyone here to enjoy this relationship, because I know it will bring great opportunities for both cities. We can have students coming from Gambia and students coming from Saginaw exchanging information together and making our communities better. So thank you, everybody, for giving me this opportunity for this presentation, and I look forward to this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, AJ. Any questions for AJ? Yes, Councilmember Coblen?
I was thinking of the same idea about having someone perform, you know, at the Train and Grain Festival. And so if, if this delegation came, would any of them know particular dances like you had suggested? Like, would they be able to teach that dance?
Yeah, I think-
Some of those dances?
Yeah, I think I will volunteer to teach the dance myself.
Because we have at least one studio in our city, maybe more, that I don't know about, that if some of those individuals could teach the teachers those dances, then they could teach them to their students.
Absolutely.
That would be kind of, kind of nice.
Yeah. The people that they'll bring in will be those that make, well, they dance to make, for a living. So that's their work.
Okay.
I know I can't dance anyway, so.
So I think that would be an interesting exchange of culture, you know, to teach some of the students here those dances.
Yeah. Yeah, that would definitely be great.
Please consider the booth for your plaintiff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for AJ? Oh, Councilmember Big Horse.
On the government side of things, you know, I would love to be able, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, to spend some time with your mayor and your council. Obviously, we'd have to do that like Zoom or some other webinar or web-based meeting. What's the time difference between the two countries?
So right now, the time difference is five hours. Banjul, they are five hours ahead of us, like almost eleven-thirty-eight right now.
Okay.
But we've already discussed that with the mayor, to establish a Zoom meeting, and I think it will be very important to have the rest of council and the mayor with the city manager and assistant city manager to be on that meeting, so we can discuss some of, how we're gonna approach some of the issues, which will help further strengthen our relationship.
Okay. And if you do get the food booth over at the Train and Grain Festival, I'll volunteer to wash dishes and chop onions or whatever else they need done.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll make sure that the seasoning, everything, you are aware of.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Other questions for AJ? Anything else? Thank you, AJ. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Excellent. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sister cities, the sister cities memorandum and understanding between Saginaw, Texas, United States of America, and Banji, the Republic of Gambia.
Do I have a second?
Ooh, everybody was saying. This was exciting.
Although in favor, raise your right hand. Congratulations, AJ. Well done. We look forward to this being a really wonderful partnership. Absolutely. All right, at six-thirty-nine, recess into workshop. Item number ten is budget workshop compensation. For that, city manager, Gabe Brayham.
Mayor and council, want to preface the discussion tonight by saying that this be an ongoing topic as we get into our FY22 budget preparations. So we last talked about this before the holidays in November, and we're coming back with you with some, some discussion points. So intent is to provide information, to get your feedback, and we'll revisit the topic again and sort of break it up in different sections, because compensation is, there's a lot of moving parts. So based on our last discussion, we want to let you hear from some of the department heads, to give you feedback on the existing compensation plan and the desire to make some adjustments within that. At some point in the future, we'd like to come back with you and discuss market-based adjustments or comparisons, as well as identify future staff needs. So under future staff needs, there's kind of two categories. One is more positions that we currently have. So an example, patrol, you know, we all are growing, and at some point in the future, as we grow, we'll need more patrol officers and that sort of thing, as well as brand-new positions, which as we grow, offer new programs, that sort of thing would require more staff. So with that, the, the plan is to provide an overview. Lee will start. Doug will provide fire department perspective, and then Rick will weigh in from public works, our three biggest departments and where we have most of our employees. And we'll revisit again. If you have any questions now or in the future, let us know.
Gabe, we didn't hire outside agency or group to perform these studies. Each department did their own?
Right. I think at some point in the future, it'd be helpful for us to have a limited scope, third party, to look at market-based comparisons. We can talk about that later, or we can talk about it now. So, you know, it's difficult for us as staff to, because we stand to benefit for any, any adjustment recommended, to make that sort of recommendation. We also are not in the compensation and classification business. None of us are experts. I got a recommendation from somebody in the industry, HR industry of a firm that would do that, Baker Tilly. And I think with a limited scope, we can sort of narrow down on some positions where it may be helpful to have somebody from the outside. But the vast majority of positions are the, are three largest departments by employees. As I mentioned, each of their respective department heads will kind of go through their thoughts.
Gabe, just to be clear, what you're saying is you want to make sure that the public doesn't feel like the fox is watching the hen house.
That's, yeah, that's the analogy I used. And honestly, I, I know, you know, there's the perception of why do you need somebody from the outside, or why do you need a consultant is. And, and I think the reality is for all of us, mayor and council and staff, is it's helpful to have somebody from the outside to, to verify or do the work. You know, you've heard the term trust but verify, and really, I see that, could we provide market analysis or some data? Of course. But if I'm the average citizen, I'd say, hmm, you know, those staff are recommending whatever adjustments, and the city council's just going along with it. We, we hire consultants where we don't have that expertise, or we need their advice routinely, finance, land planning, you name it. So kind of the same.
So each department makes a presentation. You compile the presentation, you hand that off to a third party to say, makes sense, doesn't make sense. But they're not compiling those pieces of data. It's actually put on the backs of our, of our department heads to pull that together, as we've talked about, but you want somebody on the outside to check it and just certify it essentially.
Yeah, and really weigh in on any thoughts that they might have. You know, we, we might be missing something. What we'd like to bring to, to you in the future, on a department-by-department basis, is here's our recommended adjustments. Everything comes with a price tag, and we have to, any organization with employees, not just city organization, we all have to live within our budget constraints. Saginaw, Texas, no different. Come back with those recommendations. There'll be some positions that I think it'd be helpful, like I say, having an outsider look at that, evaluate the market objectively, and make decisions from there. So I want to mention that city council, all of us, myself and staff, very appreciative of the support of the city council expressed in, in November to address this issue. You know, the city council and past city councils have, have said this is a priority by doing a salary study, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. We've made adjustments. We'll continue to do so. Everybody, city employees are very thankful for that. So just sort of a next step. We'll do it a piece at a time. Keep talking and have a conversation.
Yeah, so let's, let's go. Let's see where we are right now. I want to hear from the department heads.
Thank you, mayor. Since you, since we discussed this last time, we utilized a small portion of salary attrition within the budget to start making some adjustments. We came up with a phased plan to try to stretch out the pay ranges, or the employees within the pay ranges of our existing pay plan. And so to spread out the compression that we've been, that we've experienced, which has kept us from being able to offer a competitive market salary to experience certified police officers in particular. So we took the first phase of that to move three police officers who've been here anywhere from eight to fourteen years, and were not even at a midpoint in our pay range yet. We moved them one to two steps apiece, and then we also moved the most senior dispatcher to one step up. We would like to continue that plan. Of course, all of this is based on availability of funds that, that'll be devoted to salary and compensation in October, but we'd like to continue that plan in October, and our, our plan would call for us to assess, again, a second group of people, and start to move up the pay rank from the entry level, so up from police officer to corporal and sergeant, and include some of our supervisors. Some of those supervisors are the ones that are the most out of balance in the market, and we would probably address, hopefully, anywhere from, you know, half a dozen to a dozen people in October, and continue to stretch those pay ranges out by tenure, so that we can have some holes to plug in other people that, and attract that experience. And also, again, the end byproduct of that is hopefully to retain the experience that we have now. So I'm glad to answer any specific questions that you might have about PD.
Yep, yep, good questions. So you, you saying you had a four-phased approach? Is that four phases, or it's just those two phases you called off?
You know, the, the, the number of phases really could be dependent upon the availability of the funds and how quickly we can make some of those adjustments. Beyond those phases of adjustments, too, there's a couple of things I think we need to do, and that, that is to address some of the policies and salary guidelines that we have, and create or amend some different guidelines there. So, you know, I would, I would assume that this is going to be something that, it would be a multi-year project to get to where we need to be.
So are you, are you, are you, is the Saginaw Police Department currently working on those updating or those policies and things like that, or that's just all starting to get started?
Yes, sir. We have, we have discussed it a number of times, and we just need to get together with other department directors and leaders in, in the city and kind of map that out. It's, there's no real secret to it. It's just a matter of mainly addressing the, the idea of moving through the steps in the pay, in the salary plan independently of cost of living or whole plan adjustments yearly. And that would be a decision that council would make, of course, and, you know, after a recommendation of, of the manager. And then also establishing what's being kind of called a lateral entry plan, and set some guidelines on where we can bring experienced officers in from the outside above an entry level to attract the, the kind of experience that we have always relied upon to, to keep a good tenure to our experienced officer level here. And again, I had, you know, discussed that last time about the lack of applicants throughout the entire police market right now. It's at a low, at a very low level, and then we, we're experiencing a, quite a bit of a reduction in the- And then we, we're experiencing a, quite a bit of a reduction in the number of qualified applicants that we're getting.
Okay, one more question. How many, how many officers are associated in, in, in that second phase as far as the October?
Well, again, it would depend upon the available funds. What, we, we could move anywhere from like say about half a dozen to a dozen people one or two steps up and, and be, and again, starting to, that's, that's not the total fix, but that's, would make a good impact in, in stretching out those pay ranges.
When we last spoke, we were talking about essentially establishing baselines. Where do you stand currently, this year's budget, in total labor budget? We were just kind of spitballing the last time, taking the total police department budget. What percentage of that is actually labor budget? So you, you should have a dollar amount set to the side that says this is, this pays out in salary. So what is roughly that number? Do you know that off the top of your head?
You know, I might, I might ask for Kim's to help on this, but I think it's somewhere around 75 to 80%.
80% of total budget?
Overall, citywide, we're about 78%, I want to say off the top of my head, of, as personnel, that's salaries and benefits and everything.
Yeah, total compensation. Sorry, clarify that.
That's citywide. That's not just police department.
That's citywide, but, but each department is, especially the police department, it's almost all salary frankly. I mean, you know, we have some operating costs, but it's mostly the people that we're paying. So let's see. So it's, it's close to $4 million out of 5.3.
Okay. So $4 million is your, your basic ball of money to spend on salaries and total compensation?
Sorry, it's, it's, I would say 4.5.
Okay, 4.5. So Chief, in order to get to midpoint, how much does that number need to grow? Whole department. Let's, let's, let's talk in, in large numbers here so that we all can understand what the challenge is, okay? So if we need to adjust that 4.5, I think the last time we were talking, there was a $10,000 move. There was a guy that left here, went to somewhere else for 10 grand, okay? And we were saying if we applied 10 grand to every officer that works in the department today, does that adjust the whole department to midpoint?
10 grand, yes, it would. The whole department though, doesn't really need to go to midpoint, but a substantial number of them do. And I, you know, I would, I, I, to be honest with you, I haven't totally calculated that figure in one fail swoop because I figured that this would be phased in over a period of years and, and would then make that figure a little bit different. But, you know, you could, there are, there are, I can tell you that going through the ranks, there are people that are anywhere from a few percentage points out of a market average to, to as much as 15% out of a market average. And then when, if you, if you, if we adjusted people based on tenure, solely on tenure and tried to get the ones to midpoint or above midpoint that should be, in other words, I think you discussed before, when you have people that have been in grade, like say our sergeant, who's kind of the poster child of this movement to a degree, who's been in grade for, been in the department for over 20 years, been in grade for 11 years, he should be way past midpoint. You, I mean, there needs to be an expectation for people to reach close to the top out in our, in their pay range if they stay in the same position in 20 to 25 years. I mean, that's, I think, a logical place for, you know, for you to set that benchmark. So I, I think to, to achieve people that need to be at midpoint, you're talking about $200,000 to $300,000. You know, it's probably going to be somewhere between 6% to 8% of our current salary base.
Okay. Which is about that $300,000 mark. And that would get your entire salary base to a point where you could say you're at, you're at midpoint revenue for your department. When I say midpoint revenue for your department, that means you have access to the funds and you can distribute those funds within your department how you see fit, whether people are over midpoint, under midpoint, or at midpoint. I think we're failing our departments if we can't fund them at midpoint, is what I'm saying. So we got, we need another midpoint. If you don't have enough for midpoint, we're failing it. So that's across-the-board midpoint. Now, where we're having to phase this in is the state says we can only raise our revenue from the taxpayer X percentage per year. That doesn't keep us from going to the taxpayer and asking for it. Quite frankly, we are in a position at any point in time, if we can justify the reason that we have to raise salaries to a midpoint, to, to be, to be very clear here, to retain employees and to keep employees happy about working here in Saginaw, you have to be armed with the midpoint. I, I don't see it any other way. And if we don't understand what that gap is, if this group of seven people, they don't understand what the gap is, it's because you haven't communicated it to us, okay? So what I'm asking for, and I'll ask the same question over and over and over again, where are we today and where do we have to be to get to midpoint? And when we add all that up and it's 1.8 million bucks or whatever it might be, we know that is a very steep hill to climb in terms of what the state will allow us to do raising taxes. But we can certainly go to the, to the public and we can ask for that money. Nothing in state law says we can't ask for it. So if we want to ask for it, we can do it all in one fail swoop. If we have to plan it out over five years to get the, to the 1-point-whatever million, remember, we're changing the tires on a moving vehicle. We're still growing in population. So our percentage, where we're budgeting for seven people per thousand per capita, per thousand in population, if we're targeting that phasing to last five years, we've also got a budget in the fact we're going to grow more people in that five-year period. So not only are we having to peg down today what that percentage is, we're going to forecast into the future what we've got to have in five years. So I understand the dynamic and what we're having to manage around, but please, please, please tell us today in real numbers what midpoint is in, in dollars and cents. As hard as it may be to hear, we've got to hear it. We have to hear it.
Yeah. Mayor and council, point well received. That's, our intent is to revisit this issue and bring back those numbers likely on a department-by-department basis. And the reality is, like you mentioned, our capacity is X and we'll achieve whatever we can toward an end goal. So we'll, we'll come back with you, with numbers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chief.
Other questions for Chief Howe?
I think we need to do that.
Councilmember Big Horse?
Hi, Chief. Thank you so much for the information. I, I totally agree with Patrick and just a quick, quick calculation, it looks like we're looking at just under a 7% increase just for your department. One of the questions I have is when you talk about market average, are we comparing apples to apples? Are we comparing ourselves to other cities our size, like we've talked about in the past, Belton and Kerrville? Or are we comparing ourselves to Dallas or Fort Worth included in that average? And that doesn't have to be answered tonight, but that's part of the presentation that I would like to see.
Sure. And, and I can, I can provide the, the exact salary comparison that we've done for the last couple of years. And we, we picked nine other cities that are comparable in size and position with us in, in the metroplex and a couple of cities that are probably a little bit bigger than we are, however, they are directly in competition with us. And I say that because we have actually lost applicants or lost employees in the last three to five years to those particular cities. So the, and, and I can just tell you right off, so we, in our, in our current salary comparison, we have Benbrook, Watauga, Keller, Burleson, Colleyville, Corinth, Grapevine, North Richland Hills, and Saxon. We have not included any of the larger departments. Actually, if we included Dallas, I can tell you that the average would go down from what it is now. But so, but certainly Fort Worth, we compete with for applicants. You know, we compete with every agency in the metroplex though, and that's, you know, 11 counties, over 200 cities, and over 300 law enforcement agencies, right here within a 50 to 60 mile radius of Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. So it's difficult, you can, we can pick any number of cities and, and variety of sizes and shapes and locations and it would probably turn out pretty much the same. But we tried to stick as close to known competitors in size and population and size of department as we could.
Okay. And I, I know it, we've talked about this before, but does the crime rate and type of crimes also fit into that equation for the market average? Or is that just, I, I know we, we can't ever project what's going to happen in the future.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know of any city that involves crime rate or type of crime in a salary assessment or salary study.
Kenny, do you mean comparing like cities crime rate by crime rate, meaning like Saginaw versus another city, their crime rate's higher, therefore maybe their salary should be bigger? Is that sort of your question? Something like that? Okay.
Hazard pay.
Sir?
Hazard pay.
Yeah. Well, it, it, it does, but it, but again, I would submit to you that anything that happens in Dallas and Fort Worth or anywhere in the, in a metroplex of nearly 8 million people could happen in Saginaw on any given day.
Other questions for Chief?
Chief, thank you. I appreciate the info. I want to stress to the, to folks what we've done, you know, this is not a, we're not just starting this today. We've been doing this for several years. I'm trying to remember what, what you're talking, I'm trying to remember how long ago we had some discussions. It's been seven or eight years. We had discussions on where we were with police pay and committed to start raising up. It is slow. It is a slow, painful process. I understand that. People are frustrated. I understand. As Patrick mentioned, we are handcuffed a little bit, but we have made a commitment several years ago to bring up our folks, including the police. We are not a defund the police city, but we also don't have complete huge pockets. We don't have unlimited supply of money. So that's where we are. We just need to plan out the best way to do it. We are committed to absolutely bringing our folks up. My, my goal is to retain our folks, number one. We've got some really, I think, great folks. I want to retain them. I want to make them happy. Then we can talk about new people, but that's, that's job one, is to retain our existing police force, so. Any other questions for Chief Howe? Move on to Chief Spears?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did have some identifiable salary compression hurdles and tenure disparities within our department. Good news is we were able to address a lot of those with our recent promotions and some slight reorganization within our department. Perfect time to do that. I would like to extend appreciation to Gabe for being open-minded and acknowledging the challenges we face in our, in our salaries across, in our department, across all the departments really, and, and being open-minded and receiving the methods and suggestions to address them. There's not a one-size-fits-all solution. You've probably heard me say that many times. It's challenging. I think all the employees acknowledge that. With that said, in the fire department, we still have some, some salary challenges. We've planned to try to address those October 1, next year's budget. I think all the departments are on track for doing that. I think most of it can be fixed within our existing salary structure, but there is some work to be done, as you've discussed with Chief Howe and, and Gabe. I won't reiterate a lot of the things Chief Howe said. We've covered those in detail, but I'll answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
What's your current salary budget, Chief Spears?
We're, we're closer to 90% in our department.
Kim, can we get that in round numbers roughly?
We're, as Gabe mentioned, you know, we're just working during, we're all talking together to try to come up with a plan, so the numbers aren't tied down yet. I, I haven't even seen the specifics of the step plan and how they're planning on doing that. So, but.
I think Patrick's question is where are we today?
Yeah, just today. What, in, in, in today's budget, not in the future budget. I just, I'd just like to get an understanding and write down a baseline.
I think we really want to know, is that much, you know, make a now, well, how much is it going to take to keep everybody here? That's the big ballpark number. We would just like a ballpark number on what it would take to get each department up where y'all need them. It won't happen overnight, but we can work.
For the fire department, getting everybody at midpoint, it's probably just under that $200,000 mark. It's a significant amount, but it's, it's.
It's about 3, 3.5 out of 3.9.
Okay. So 3,500,000 and you're saying around 200K to get everybody in the midpoint?
Probably short of that in the fire department, just due to the number of employees.
It's starting to sound like that 7% number is, is.
Consistent.
Holding pretty true. Okay. That's all I had, Chief.
How many firefighters do we have right now? What's our number?
29. And with Joseph, that's a 30 employee department.
And that includes you and Chief Craver as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How many police do we have? How many officers do we, should I ask police?
51 positions total.
Does that include open positions?
Yes.
That's this, that, and everything, right?
Yes.
What's our sworn officer number?
Yeah, 41.
41? Okay.
What was, what was the fire department total count, head count?
29 and then one with our emergency management coordinator, 30.
Is that open positions? Or do you have any open positions?
We, we've got two vacancies now, but we've got people, we're plugging them in to this month.
But that's part of the 29?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how many vacancies do we have?
We have, currently, we have two police officers and one dispatcher vacant.
And Joe is under your budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Other question for Chief Spears? All right. Ready to go to Rick?
What are we talking about? Yeah, I guess, you know, we've been able, in recent months, to kind of look at some individual positions and do something on a short, short-term basis, but really, I'm a data-driven person, as you would expect. And so I do think that probably the first step for public works is to, is to do both a position analysis to see what the job description is and then a market comparison or what the comparison is. You know, I, the chief talked about Dallas and, and having a comparison of Dallas and that our average would probably drop. You know, I belong to a group of peers, public works, roundtable, that, you know, it, it seems like the problems that we're having, which is primarily the entry-level positions, trying to bring those in and retain those positions is a struggle. And for example, we've had two positions in the general service, in our public services department that have been vacant since the mid-January. I mean, some, sometimes they don't even, they'll schedule an interview and won't even show up for the interview. So whatever's going on there, I, I guess probably is a sign of the times that we're in currently and hopefully that'll change over the next year or more. But, you know, we, we talked to this public works group and the public works director of the city, Keller, reached out and said, you know, what are you guys paying entry-level positions? And so he provided data and I looked at that and, and Melanie looked at that and, and they actually pay less than we do and they have doubled the population. So, you know, sometimes maybe the market isn't trying to compare city to city, but it, it, it's also just as much comparing job description to job description. I don't know what type of duties that the entry-level in Keller does compared to us, but, you know, I would like to look at the, again, the market analysis based on the job description and, and what other cities are paying to try to get a feel for what those levels of compensation should be. Long-term, you know, those are short, short-term fixes, kind of fixing these, these individuals that were. fixes, kind of fixing these, these individuals that we've been trying to attack in recent months. Long-term, I think, for me, I think it's important to look at Public Works structure, organizational structure, and try to define those positions, what they're going to look like five years from now, and then design a, a compensation program that, that's commensurate with that, you know, whatever that is. You know, today, I wear a lot of hats. You know, I would envision someday, for example, that the planning and zoning function would move in with development, building, the buildings official would be probably under a future director, that would be the planning, planning and development director, and then you would have a traditional Public Works Director, which would be, you know, water, sewer, streets, parks, et cetera. So, I mean, long-term vision, if I were the city manager and trying to try to create a vision for that department, that's the way I would look at that. You know, in light of also the, you know, the long-term plan that, that, you know, you guys fed into and that we adopted as, as a long-term plan for staffing, you know, per capita. So, I mean, that's kind of the approach that I would take. I really don't have a feel for what, what the, the compensation is out there for the entry level, and also the mid-level. You know, we have environmental, water and sewer, and public services, which is the peak, streets and parks, et cetera, and water and sewer. So those are traditional Public Works things, but we also have code enforcement and the building official and inspection as part of that, too. So, you know, I think that those middle managers, for example, for, for sure, need to look at, but we need to do something in the short term for the problem that we're having for the entry-level positions. And, and I think, again, just the position analysis and the, and the market analysis as far as compensation. The other thing I think we need to do that we don't do a good job at in Saginaw, I don't think, is, is to try to define what is our compensation level, a total compensation level. I mean, we, we have a robust, or really a great insurance plan that, that the city invests in funds for, for the employee. You know, our time off has a value, our vacations have value, et cetera, et cetera. You know, that needs to be quantified into a dollar amount, so that when we're marketing to, to employees, future employees, we can say, hey, you know, this is where we're at. And then for the current employee, you know, this is, this is the value of what the city's giving you in total compensation. You know, that needs to be communicated better. And then finally, when, when we do set that organizational structure, I think that for some positions, you need to give these folks a career path. You know, you need to give them, and that's kind of the step plan. You, you got to give them some milestones that say that, you know, if I complete this level of training, then that's an automatic promotion to this level, et cetera, et cetera. And then we assist that employee get there with, with training and investing in training, and those certificate programs and licenses that are out there to, to try to, to create a better value or a, a more well-rounded and trained employee. And so, I mean, those are, I kind of rambled there a lot, but anyway, those are just kind of some of the thoughts that I've had thinking about the, the compensation.
Questions for Mr. Trice?
You have a lot of information there. You give us a lot.
Well, you know, and I'm, I'm expecting Melanie to do the lion's share of the work.
I think we should probably, I think we should pay you as the third party. Get you to planning out all of this.
Well, you know, if you, if you look at Public Works, I mean, I'll toot my own horn. Public Works Director in Saginaw, you know, I, I do planning, zoning, building, code enforcement, you know, in traditional Public Works. So, I mean, I know the Public Works Director in Keller is, is not doing the same thing, you know, so. But we're doing it on a smaller scale, but, you know, the job is the job. It's just like a police officer. The police officer, you know, if he's working in Keller or working in Saginaw, he's, he's doing the same job. But we're also sensitive, as you are sensitive, to, to, you know, there are funding constraints because of a city our size doesn't have the amount of resources that a larger city would have. So, you know, that's, again, that's why we pay you the big bucks, to kind of make those judgments.
Questions for Rick?
I, I think, you know, it's, it's a simple question, it seems, to ask departments with a much more structured organization. Your, your organization or your departments, I'm going to say departments, because in most larger cities, you are three separate departments.
At least, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I think, in, in thinking through what the challenges are for what we call, in Saginaw, our Public Works Director, in organizing that department or those multiple departments into a budget, it's a little more nuanced. I certainly understand where you're coming from. I think what's important for us to understand is that where we are today, in, in terms of how, what, what is your, what is your total salary budget today, in today's budget, and then in thinking of that five years down the road, how that department may be split up into two or three other departments, essentially, that pool of money that we're talking about is not going to be multiplied by three, it's going to be divided by three.
Yep.
So it's the same pool of money, it's just how it's distributed. So I think for us to better understand what that, what that distribution is, obviously, we would need to understand what this future reorg looks like, but for now, I, I think for us to just have an understanding and know, what is your current, what's your current salary budget, and where do you think that it might need to be?
I agree, and that's one approach. As I say, you know, we've got this pot of money, and if, if, if it's sustainable, if it's fundable, you know, within, when the constraints of the budget, then yeah, we could just divvy up the money and then play with it however we want.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's up to the department head at that point.
It is, but, but I would like to be also cognizant and aware that's headed in the future, so that that, you know, that doesn't somehow hinder that growth or hinder that future development. When I say development, the department development.
Are you able to, I mean, what, what are we talking about in terms of percentage here? You're, you're not in the 90% range. It's probably closer to that 75% range.
For, for public services and parks together, it's about 890,000 is salaries, and their total of the two, those two divisions are about 1.8. They've got more operating costs.
But there's also, you know, there's also development, you know?
That's right. That, that just includes the public services and parks. You've also got code and fleet under...
Yeah.
Under...
And environmental, so, you know.
And then, yeah, and, and water and sewer.
So I think, I think it's worth not putting you guys on the spot to just total all those together, but it's all under your hat, Rick. I mean, it's, at some point, a salary adjustment's going to have to cross your desk with your signature on it, right now, in any one of those, in any one of those positions. So it sounds like you're controlling about 890K in salaries in Public Works and Development. We don't know what it is that you're controlling right now in, in code enforcement and the other sub-departments that you're controlling, but that's something that I think we need to know. We really need to know that, that's what he's controlling, and what we might need to adjust across the board for you guys, you and Gabe, to sit down and figure out, what does this map look like in five years?
Yeah. And I don't want to make the problem too complicated. You know, like I said, it's maybe a two-phase approach. There's an immediate attack, you know, what is the pot of money? But, but long-term...
Sure.
You know, what are the salary level and position levels that are required to make the city function five, 10 years down the road?
Depends on population at that point.
It does, but, you know, and the demographics are changing. I mean, in terms of just infrastructure and the developments that are in place, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
And the fact that, you know, we've got over 50% of our workforce eligible to retire is, is going to drive, that's going to be an upward pressure on salaries, I promise you. We know, we already talked about that.
Yeah, it will be. So if, at some point, maybe in an email after the workshop tonight, I think, I think the ask is pretty clear. If we can just know where, where the department heads salary, we'll call it the pot of money, that each department has to divvy out in salaries. And I, I don't envy your position, Rick, because you do have, you've got the most nuanced and versatile group of people that are working under your department right now. So it's, this is probably why we, as a council, continue to hear the importance of having someone from the outside coming in, is to kind of assist in consulting how that department would best be structured, and, and what do you call these people? What are they doing? What is their actual job description? And, and that comparatively with other cities might be difficult to define. So that's probably why we keep hearing that from both Gabe and Rick.
And I don't know how you quantify what, what that's worth. You know, if, if Keller does planning in traditional Public Works, but I do planning and zoning and et cetera, you know, what's that worth? You know, how do you, how do you, how do you quantify that?
Ad hoc.
Yeah.
You're, you're the Department of ad hoc.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever we need for that day, you're covering the base.
So, so to the point, we'll come back with packages by department to address the midpoint concerns and bring that, and then I, I don't want to, because there's a lot with compensation. We'll also revisit new positions, like, you know, for example, Keith's department, there's, we could very easily in the future have a standalone communication specialist, handle social media, website, all things that, you know, Keith does now. And there's other departments that have needs for, for new positions. We'll come back, keep that separate. One thing I mentioned about Public Works, and I think it's literally going to drive Rick to retirement, as sad as it makes me, but the department's undergoing accreditation, so peer-reviewed standards that are, that are national standards through the American Public Works Association. We're going through that, oh, I say we, they are. But part of that, it makes the department look at, compare to other agencies and say, okay, here's the standard, and here's, to, to make sure we're uniform and competitive, and it, it's thoughtful and makes sense. So that's underway. To Rick's point, as a city grows and changes, the organization needs to change. And, you know, I experienced that in other cities, and that'll happen. So thankfully, we're, you know, the one thing I want to say, that the people that are coming in to the organization are great, and that speaks to the departmental leadership. You know, good people draw in other good people. Fire department, I don't know that they have any staff left in, in another neighboring city that served as the farm team, which is great. If they're coming to Saginaw, we don't want to be the farm team for another city, but that speaks well to leadership. And, again, we're very thankful, support of the, the council. Continue, and, and we'll come back with some information.
Counsel, any other questions on this?
So Gabe, have you looked at the third party, reaching out to the third party, or you have any?
Yeah, we, we talked to a firm, Baker Tilly, and they gave us sort of a, a menu of things that they can offer. Don't think we'll need all those services. I think to be objective, kind of like what Rick mentioned, certain positions, you have to, you have to be clear in doing an analysis, you're comparing like to like. So like, like Rick's point, Public Works Director in Saginaw is different than Public Works Director in Keller. They have the same title, they're not the same functions. So I think we'll come back. I think we can do the departmental midpoint and recommend that to you, and there'll be some positions that we need to throw at a third party and say, hey, help us out. You know, we didn't mention this, but really, we need to acknowledge it, but our, our senior staff, department heads, managers and above, Assistant Chief is around the door, Ragsdale, you know, you all know this. He'll, he'll be the next chief, so long as I'm here. He's well-qualified, but we're lucky in that our leadership, we have kind of a next level of leaders, but, you know, we're, we're living off the good graces of folks who want to stay, which may or may not be the case, and you've got to make these corrections. So, long rambling answer, the answer's yes. We'll probably define the scope and rein it in, and then bring something for your review.
Any other questions for Gabe? Thank you, guys. Great start tonight. Appreciate the information. All right, so 7:24, we can convene back into regular session. At 7:24, convening to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087. We will return to adjournment. We will return to adjournment.
Yeah, he was...
Everybody here? At eight o'clock, we can back into regular session. I'll entertain most do adjourn.
Mayor, I make the motion we adjourn.
Valerie, Cindy's second. All those in favor? Eight o'clock, we're out of here. Thank y'all. Turn off your microphone.
That's it.
...
...